All right, welcome to the January 9th meeting of the City of Davenport zoning board of adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of the zoning ordinance for hardship variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Dan Darland, Chairman of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today are from your left to right, Bridgette Boyd Carlson, myself, and Angela Layback. Staff present are Laura Berkeley, Scott Copes, and Attorney Mallory Bagby. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to the standard is that staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice are at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they will be permitted to speak to answer that question, but I'll ask that you keep response limited to the specific question. Are there any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? There are none, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes. So for new business, do I read the three members EBA first or with each one?
Let me just read it first.
Okay. So for all applicants here tonight, there are only three members present of this five-member board. Approval of any motion requires unanimous vote of all three members present. Our bylaws grant the Chair the discretion to allow you to request a tabling of this hearing until a later date. Once the board hears your items, your item, this opportunity to table will have passed. So when each of your cases are called up, I'll ask you if you'd like to proceed or to have your hearing tabled. The first agenda item is request HV23-01 of Mr. Carwash at 707 East Kimberly Road for hardship variance to locate the screened dumpster south of the proposed building along East 38th Street approximately 15 feet from the south property line. Section 17.09.030.Q prohibits dumpsters within the front or corner side yard, and this is in Ward 7. Is the applicant here? You step up, please. So first, before we hear the staff's report, I just want to ask you if you want to continue with the three members present or table?
We'd like to continue.
All right, thank you. Take a quick seat while we have the staff report.
Scott Copes, DNS. Again, this request is for the location of the dumpster, and as we stated in the staff report, there's actually four street frontages here. You have Kimberly, you've got Davenport, you've got Jefferson, and you've got 38th, I believe, is the other street. And so this diagram, the big long red arrow, points to a location about 15 feet from the south property line of 38th Street, and that's where the dumpster will be located. This next slide here, it shows that that triangle crosshatched area is the only place to locate the dumpster and meet all of our requirements. However, since that's the front of the building, which is right here, where there'd be cars parked in front there and activity, staff does concur that the proposed location is probably the best location on this site. And that's what our findings are. Our recommendation is that for approval, however, we want to have a review and approval of some extra landscaping around the required screening that's going to be there. Once we approve that, then we would be able to go forward. That's our recommendation.
Okay.
Chair, I think that Mike may have logged on. I heard a ding, so we can just give him a quick minute. Mike, are you there?
I am there, thank you.
All right. Well, then we have four, so we're good to go. All right, so, Board, any questions of the staff from the report?
So the Mark McDavid is with Land SAV.
Right. So applicant, you can come back up and present your petition.
Commissioner Gallier, we are in the item A, request HV23-01, just to orient you.
Thank you.
Yep, so I think what was said was pretty straightforward. As you can see, the triangle where we'd like to put the dumpster, or where the code would require us to put the dumpsters, right in front of our building. Those parking spaces are vacuum parking spaces, so it does take not only out of the parking spaces, but also the business side. This dumpster location right here was originally also going to have a structure, so you can see kind of the three structures on the northwest part of the parking lot. Those are enclosures for the vacuum compressors, helps mask the sound. So for this dumpster location, we are taking an existing vacuum compressor component, structure, just widening it and putting a dumpster enclosure in that with an additional gate. So that structure is already clean to be there, it'll just be utilized in multiple ways.
Okay.
Yeah, we believe that, as you see with the triangle, anybody who would be building or developing on this site would have issues with dumpster location as well.
Okay. Any questions about the recommendation for the robust landscaping to be reviewed and approved?
Yeah, that was one of the questions, robust landscaping, what exactly would that entail, I guess?
That would be something other than just grass, you know, decorative grass that's not really hiding much, so some bushes and some shrubs, and you can, it could be mixed up, it doesn't have to be consistently the same thing, but just something to hide the enclosure a little bit.
Okay.
So if we approve with the term robust, then staff and applicant can work together on the review and approval piece?
Correct.
Get it there.
Do you have a height that you're looking for for these shrubs? The structure is about eight feet tall.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be anything more than two feet or three feet at first. They can, you know, grow to mature plant height later on, so.
Yep.
Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the request? Anyone in the audience wish to speak opposed to the request? Okay, any final comments?
No final comments.
All right, so Board, our time to discuss. Any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Okay. What's that? Mike, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve HV23-01 with the recommendation of staff for the robust landscaping.
Motion to approve HV23-01 with robust landscaping.
Second.
Roll call, please. Gallier?
Yeah.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
And Angela Layback?
Yes.
And Chairman? Yes. All right, so that's passed, thank you.
Do you want me to have to return where the next one is?
Yeah. We'll go through the same steps.
Yeah, I'll go sit down.
We'll be right back with you.
Yeah.
Next agenda item is HV23-02 of Mr. Carwash at 707 East Kimberly Road for hardship variance to reduce the 50% required transparency of the building facade facing public right-of-way. Section 17.05.040 and Table 17.05-2, the Davenport Municipal Code requires 50% transparency, transparent windows for building elevations facing the public right-of-way as measured between two and 10 feet on the facade. The property is Zone C2 corridor commercial. Can the staff report, please?
Scott Copes, DNS. So this first folder just kind of shows the site where that, I forgot to mention it last time, but the Wells Fargo Bank is going to be demolished, and then this is where the car wash should be going. The C2 district which this is in requires a 50% transparency between two feet and 10 feet with actual transparent windows. Spandrel decorative glass that's not transparent doesn't officially account through our code as it's written. This table kind of shows you what the applicant has proposed. There are two elevations that meet the requirements. That's the one to the northeast and to the northwest. And so the main one that faces Kimberly, that has 50% glass, meeting our transparency requirement completely. I can show that elevation in a minute. But the southwest, which we looked at earlier, that was the kind of the front where the dumpster could have been located, that's going to have 9% transparency, but the difference, they'll have 41% spandrel in that, so if you add the two together, it would give you the 50%. So they'll need a variance for that on the southwest, and there's also on the southeast, kind of faces Old Town, Chuck E. Cheese direction, that's going to have 32% of actual transparency and 18% of spandrel. There's an error on my table here, let me see. So here's the layout. So again, the side facing Kimberly. So the side facing Kimberly is, again, that has the 50% transparency, all real glass. The side facing towards Brady Street Stadium, that's going to have the 9% real glass and the remainder 41%. And the small, short end of the building that faces kind of Chuck E. Cheese, that's going to have the 32%. And actually, the northwest portion is going to have 55%, so they exceeded our requirement on that elevation. So this is the side that faces Kimberly. This is the side that faces the southwest towards Chuck E. Cheese. You can see the area I have circled in blue is the area that meets the transparency, and the other...
Southeast, right?
Yeah. Okay, well, yeah, this is, yeah, southeast, correct. And that's right over here is this darker blue or grayish color is the spandrel. So again, this is the kind of where the front where people come to enter, this faces the southwest. All this over here, the darker kind of bluish gray is spandrel, and the door and the window over here are the actual transparent glass. This is all the same as what was in the packet that you had. So this is the northeast, this is the one that meets 55%, they're exceeding our requirements on that side. So our findings, the petitioner has demonstrated the following. Number one, application of the ordinance creating a hardship has been established. That, to reiterate, that's kind of what the four different streets, it's almost impossible to construct a building functionally that has glass 50% on all four sides. It really wouldn't leave you with any room to do anything in the inside. Number two, physical and topographical conditions of the property, they do impact functionality, that would be the four streets that they have facing them. Number three, unique circumstance, that again is the same what we mentioned. Protection of essential character has been established. I think the spandrel glass combination with real transparency does provide a visual interest and for this property that it needs the spirit of the code, if not the full intent. Staff's recommendation. Approval standards have been met, staff recommends approval of the request subject to the development equalling the required amount of transparency with spandrel glass as shown on the submitted application for the southeast and the southwest elevations.
All right, Board, any question of staff? Mike?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, applicants?
So similar to the last...
Go ahead and say your name again.
Oh, yeah, Mickey Evers with ISG representing Terraform, Mr. Carwash. So same, obviously same site as last time, with the road on four sides and the frontages as mentioned, it's just really hard to get 50% transparency through the entire building. You look on the elevations of it, the side with the 9% spandrel, the two doors just right... if you go back to the other one. So the blue areas with the two doors, those are exterior bathroom entrances, so those can't have glass on or transparency, obviously. The remaining spandrel to the right of that on the sheet, that is all a long mechanical room for the car wash machinery. We don't believe that having transparency on this will add any visual interest to the site. Probably, we believe best to have it shielded away from the public. And then the left side where we do have the transparency glass is the lobby and administrative area for the car wash. And as well, on the other side, the southeast side, the spandrel glass that we have there is the other side of the mechanical room. So, I hear my point from before. No more, any other comments at this time?
All right, thanks. Thank you, staff. Any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you.
No, thank you, I'm sorry. But Board, any questions of the applicant? Mike, any questions? Oh, thanks, Mike. All right.
No, thank you.
You go ahead and have a seat. Thank you. Board, discussion time. Oh, no, wait, hang on, back up. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the request? Anyone in the audience wish to speak opposed to the request? All right. Any final comments, applicant? All right, Board, discussion. Mike, any comments, any discussion?
No comment.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to approve HV23-02 with the, I guess, be developed as presented in the applicant's petition.
I'll make a motion to approve HV23-02 with the material presented in the, by staff. I'll second.
Roll call, please. Boyd Carlson? Angela Layback?
Yes.
Mike Gallert?
Yeah.
And Chairman Darland? All right, so that's passed, thank you so much. Next piece of business, request SU23-01 of Avis Car Rental, 2156 West Kimberly Road, for special use to operate a vehicle rental facility having typical 10 but no more than 25 rental vehicles at the site. The lot containing 10 active businesses and a total of 23 commercial units, has 210 parking spaces available, which is 25% more off-street parking spaces than required by code. Table 17.08-1 requires a space, a special use review for vehicle rental in the C3 general commercial district. Can the staff report, please?
Scott Copes with DNS. This property has been in existence, I think, since the late 80s. There've been a number of uses here. At one time, the DMV, I believe, had their license renewals there. We did an analysis of the parking area. There is, even with the proposed use, and figuring out if the vacant spaces were filled out with an average use rate, there would still be an additional 51 spaces that are available for parking. So parking should not be an issue. The use is not going to create any noise or odors or anything that's noticeable. The only thing that really is noticeable is that corner portion, southeast corner portion of the parking lot that typically isn't used, will have typically 10 cars, the applicant has said, but they have a leased area for 25 cars, so there's a couple times during the year they might get close to that 25. So this shows you just kind of exactly where those 25 spots are there. Diagonal parking makes a weird kind of shape there, but that's what that is. We sent out notices and nobody responded or had any concerns, no phone calls or letters or written correspondence. So again, the request is, the ordinance requires a special use to have car rentals, because sometimes the cars can be a nuisance depending on where they're located and how they're managed. Staff did not see any issues with this request. The use compatible with adjacent land uses, the building that the office is shields any residential areas from the parking area are ready, and again, it's not going to be any different parking than what's right there now. Approval standards have been met for special use, staff recommends approval as proposed.
All right, thank you. Board, any questions of staff?
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm trying to, yep. Staff did read the wrong recommend, well, the right recommendation, but I forgot there's a condition that they be restricted to 25 rental vehicles on-site at any one time in the leased area as shown on the application.
Okay. And then our packet, if I'm reading right, it has the recommendations SU21-05, which...
Yeah, it should be SU23-01.
Okay. Maybe flip through an extra couple of pages, make sure I wasn't lost. All right, is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can you come on up and introduce yourself and present your petition?
Good afternoon, Jeff Wagner, Avis Budget Group. I'm certainly able to answer any questions you might have. Staff has done a good job of putting their findings together towards the affirmative side of our project. The only additional points that I'd like to make is that this site was chosen, one, because of the underlying zoning, and it does allow our use with this board's approval. Two, it provides a very unique situation in that the adjacent property on the southeast corner of the lot is a coin-operated car wash, which will allow us to clean the vehicles right there on-site and not have to attempt to do it behind the building, or build any kind of car wash, or take them off-site. It's all self-contained. Relative to the parking spaces, as staff has indicated, our average vehicles on the lot would be 10. The 25 comes because we don't control the returns. We can control our reservations, we can control the outflow. Our entire fleet is transient amongst the United, along the Lower 48, so you can rent a car here and go anywhere and vice versa. There's six to eight key days a year where the parking could or might hit 25 vehicles, and that is the Tuesday after Memorial Weekend, the first business day after the Fourth of July holiday, the first Tuesday after Labor Day, all holiday-related, when the customers return the cars and they're done, and we have to take them back. And then it's only a matter of time until we redistribute them typically back to Quad Cities Airport in this case.
Okay. All right, Board, any questions of the applicant or from the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant.
Sure.
How do you propose to manage when customers are bringing their rental units back that they, it doesn't all get congregated right outside of your 25 allowed parking spots? Outside of that area where your parking spots are allowed?
Well, part of the return process is that the operator of the location and his or her staff will walk each vehicle with the customer to check for damage and excessive interior dirty conditions, dog hair, smoking, that sort of thing. And at that point in time, the car would be relocated into those marked spaces, I say those marked, the areas that were indicated on the site plan, so that they don't bottleneck up towards the front of the shopping center. We realize that those spaces are very valuable for the retail businesses and their customers, and we would want to keep those open and be good neighbors about it.
So it's fair to say that the driver doesn't know where to park? They'll bring it up to the building, they'll park like most of us do as close as they can, then you guys will receive the car, take it to your car wash, and park it where it belongs?
Well, there'd be two types of customers. If you rent it from us, we'll direct you at the time of the rental where to park it when you return.
Great.
It's the customer that rents it somewhere else that's never been here before, they're going to gravitate to the front door or as close as they can get to it, and then we'll move it out of the way.
All right. All right. Mike, can I answer a question?
Yeah, yeah, it's very good, and appreciate the, you know, being a good neighbor to the rest of the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Sir, anyone in the audience that wish to speak in favor of the request? Anyone in the audience that wish to speak opposed to the request? All right, Board, discussion. Comments, discussion? Mike, any comments or concerns?
None, thank you.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve request SU23-01 with the recommendation from staff that you shall not exceed the maximum 25 rental vehicles.
I will make that motion to approve SU23-03, right?
01.
With staff recommendations, oh, excuse me, 01, with staff recommendations.
Second.
Roll call, please. Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Gallert?
Yes.
Layback?
Yes.
And Darland?
Yes. Thank you. So the motion has passed. All right, next and last piece of new business is request HV23-04 of Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh at 4631 East 53rd Street for hardship variance to reduce the 50% required transparency of the building facade facing public right-of-way. Section 17.05.040 and Table 17.05-2 of the Davenport... of the Downport Municipal Code requires fifty percent transparent windows for building elevations facing the public right-of-way as measured between two and ten feet of the facade. This property is owned C-two corridor commercial.
Is applicant here? All right. Can the staff report, please?
Scott Cokes, DNS. So again, this is another request to have a hardship variance from our transparency requirements. This is the third in the last two meetings. So this location, we kind of refer to as the Sophie Foster location. It's Birchwood South is the subdivision. Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh is going to be on the corner of Ravenwood, which is a new street, and Fifty-third Street. And they also have a backstreet behind them as well. So they have three frontages, and thus they have to have fifty percent on all three frontages with our code as it's written today. They are proposing to meet the requirement where it faces Fifty-third Street and are proposing to have zero transparency to the east and to the south. This is the site plan. So again, north is at the top. That's Fifty-third Street. And Fifty-second Street is the street on the south. Ravenwood Lane, not street, is the one to the east. So the location that's going to face the gas pumps and the parking area, that will have the fifty percent transparency. But the one that faces the south street and the side street will not have anything. And at this time, the petitioner did not propose any spandrel glass to make up any differences there. So this is the internal layout. This internal layout shows it's very, you know, given what's there, you can't have any transparency. It's the inside of these coolers and other work areas. They have a kitchen and mechanical area, an electrical room. The same is, to the east is the same way where you have the coolers on the east wall. This is the north elevation, and so what you see there are actual windows. There's no spandrel on this side or any side. Here's the east, which is the short end of the building, and the back end of the building here. And so as you can see, the south and the east don't have anything proposed at all. This is a door right there, a solid door, I believe. So staff's findings. Item number one, the application of the ordinance creating a hardship, I think that's been established with three street frontages. The physical topographical conditions of the site do impact functionality. Unique circumstance has been established due to the three street frontages. Protection of essential character, I think it can be protected if properly conditioned. And so staff does have three conditions. Staff recommends approval of the request subject to the following. The north front elevation shall meet the required fifty percent transparency as proposed. The south elevation shall have thirty-five percent transparency, well, three percent spandrel glass, which comes out to two-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet in the two-to-ten-foot height range. And the east elevation shall have thirty-five percent spandrel glass, which comes out to one-hundred-and-forty square feet. And again, that should be in the two-to-ten-foot range. So subject to those conditions, staff recommends approval.
Board, any questions of staff?
Scott, I thought you said that they couldn't have spandrel glass because...
So it doesn't count towards our official transparency, but in lieu of not having an actual window, staff would like to see spandrel there rather than a blank wall.
Right, but I thought you said there was mechanical stuff back there in the kitchen and...
Right, so on the outside of the building, there would be glass that looks like it might be transparent, but it won't be transparent.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so I can show you the elevation here. So the outside elevation is, for the most part, clear. They might be storing a few things outside here, but they can set whatever that is in front of the spandrel. Okay, that was, sorry, that was the west. This is the south, and this is the east. So these are the two that would require the spandrel of thirty-five percent per our, per staff's recommendation, our condition. Should the board want to entertain that condition.
Appreciate it.
Can you go back to the, the map? I'm trying to locate this in my brain. I can't figure out what that...
So...
The small, the roads that...
Yep, it's real hard to see, but there's a Ravenwood. It's actually paved. That street is there right now.
The aerial's from 2019.
Yep.
We don't have any, we don't have any updated aerial.
I promise you, there's a street there.
Yeah.
It was, the street went in last year. So this is a brand-new subdivision. To the, to the east is the limits with city of Bentendorf.
So that's McDonald's right there.
So that's McDonald's there.
The second building to the right is McDonald's.
Right, and to the north is a corporate park with Russell Construction.
Russell and, oh, is ORA over there too?
So it's somewhere near there. The Mississippi Valley Blood Center is over there too.
Yeah. I guess I just didn't realize those roads were finished already.
Yep, they're all done now.
Okay. So, so that east Fifty-second beat...
It runs parallel to Fifty-third there.
But is it still a field behind there or is there a neighborhood back there?
Right now, to south of what's the Fast and Fresh is not developed at this moment, but it will be eventually.
Further to the south, it is developed.
Okay.
They have townhouses there.
Okay.
I think there's about ninety units of townhouses, and they're constructing additional. So this area to the south, there'll be one commercial lot in between, in between Fast and Fresh and a residential area.
Oh, okay.
But as of right now, there's nothing...
So like the corner of that Fifty-second and whatever that's called.
So right at the very bottom, Scott can point, so there's a lot line, if you can go to the south, Scott. There's a black line right at the very bottom that is...
Oh, yeah, right about, it's right about there.
That's where the residential district starts.
Okay.
And you can actually see some residences in the Bentendorf side as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mike, any questions?
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question for Scott. So hypothetically, if we as the board approved this, the current design doesn't meet your requirements, you would have to approve that design before they could get started?
No.
Is that how this would work?
No, if you would approve today with the requirement for spandrel, they can go forward with their billing plans tomorrow, once we complete all of our other reviews that might be pending. Does that answer the question?
Yes, I think so. Yes, as long as, as long as staff is reviewing and making sure that it meets those requirements.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
We will, and I believe the building would need to see the alteration too. So we'll make sure that whoever would need to review any revisions would be seeing those.
Staff, do you, are you aware of any comparisons to like the Fast and Fresh? It's like, it'd be the southwest corner of Kimberly, Kimberly, Elmore, that intersection, and how, and how that's built, how it's designed?
Yes, we, so that was actually built prior to the new zoning code. It also contains a Starbucks drive-thru, but there's very little transparency on the Kimberly side. We did a quick analysis of other Fast and Freshes that we could see. We have not seen one where they have provided any other kind of transparency other than their main entrance.
Okay. All right, I see the drive-thru. Okay.
Yeah, and the, the south, or I'm sorry, the east side of that one, the one that's already built on Elmore and Kimberly, that east side is kind of like a rear. It faces the side yard of a motel.
Right.
There's trees there as well. So having rear transparency there probably wouldn't have done anybody any good there.
Right, you don't have the residential around it.
Right.
Okay, just trying to make comparisons in my mind. All right, applicants, you go ahead and come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and give us your petition overview.
Hi, Zach Hall from Shyve Hattery here on behalf of the applicant Hy-Vee. I think staff covered most of it. As this is a convenience store, as the layout showed with all the electrical and the kitchens and the coolers and the restrooms and whatnot, it just makes it difficult to meet that transparency requirement on the three sides as there's, as we, kind of a somewhat unique situation with the public street on three out of the four sides. So the, the applicant is in agreement with city's recommendation for the spandrel allotment that they are recommending. And I believe they, they have updated elevations that I think just got sent to the city today that shows the meeting those thirty-five percent recommendations of city staff.
All right, so you guys are good with those recommendations?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Anything else?
No, if there are any questions.
Board, any questions of the applicants?
No.
Mike?
None, thank you.
All right, thank you. I see it. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the request? It's a thin crowd tonight. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak opposed to the request? Negative. Board discussion. Final comments? Mike, any final comments, concerns?
None, thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a request to approve HV two-three dash zero-four with the three staff recommendations.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll go ahead and make that motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve HV two-three dash zero-four with conditions as recommended by staff.
I'll thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Gallert?
Yes.
Boyd Carlson, Carlson, sorry.
Yes.
And Chairman Darland?
Yes.
All right, so that has passed. Thank you. We have no other business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you, guys, for being patient with me.
Thanks, Mike, thanks for coming.
Appreciate you coming in.